Good afternoon, good evening. The Board is returning from recess on the public hearing regarding the Royal Oaks boundaries, and we'll pick up with our next speaker, Raquel Edwards. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm not a public speaker, obviously. It's Falk. I'm not married yet, but I will be soon. I'm actually a mother of two current Beverly Hills students, and I have a rising kindergartner. I'm gonna try to make this really fast, I'm sorry. This is our second year at Beverly Hills Elementary School. This is my son's second elementary school, so I'm really pushing for him not to go to a third elementary school before fourth grade. His first school, the first two years he spent at CMS School with close to 900 students that had very similar demographics to Wyancoff, which is where we would be going if Scenario E were passed. We chose to actually move from Charlotte to Concord into my ex-husband's neighborhood so that we could attend Beverly Hills, so obviously that's a big transition for us and our family. Aside from his teacher, not even his TA, no one knew his name, no one knew who he was, his characteristics, no one knew anything about his personality. So I really fear that if we do go to a larger school, that's gonna happen again. He was literally just a number, from his lunch number punching it in every day. The people in the cafeteria couldn't even look him up by his name because they didn't know who he was. So he was literally just a number, and I'm sure you guys don't want your students to be thought of as just a number in Cabarrus County, but that seems like where it's heading if we continue to go with these large schools. You know, personal anecdotes, everything like that aside, Beverly Hills really does... The choice that you guys posed to us really does make me question why you chose that small area in Area 1 to move. And I don't want to be labeled as the only minority coming up here talking about race or anything like that, but it really does make me question... I'm just gonna read this verbatim what I wrote so I don't forget anything. "Area 1, the area that my children represent is predominantly lower in the lowest-income, single-parent, and minority families. In the interest of being the least disruptive to students, shouldn't they be moved with their class if they do have to move at all? Most of these kids are faced with inherent challenges to their abilities to achieve. Why would you purposely add another challenge by separating them from their established social and educational support systems?" Royal Oaks and Wyancoff have similar scores, so I'm curious as to why we're separating and going into those two schools. If at least one of the proposed scenarios, initially proposed scenarios out of the 16 or however many you guys chose from included moving all the students, then it's obviously possible to not separate some of the students at Beverly Hills. So that's just really a big question for me. "The unfortunate conclusion that many of us have reached is that it appears to be a blatant attempt to separate the classes." I've spoken to parents at the two apartments where they would be bus to Wyancoff. Most of them didn't complete the placement, they didn't know how to complete it, they don't have access to complete it. A lot of them are Spanish-speaking parents, the notices that were sent out were not in Spanish. So you didn't give them a choice, and I know my time is up, I do apologize, but just please take that into consideration and see where I'm coming from as a mother of three in that small area that's being moved and questioning why we're being moved. Thank you.
Heather Neimer?
Yes, Heather Neimer. "I support keeping Beverly Hills School open and the Beverly Hills community thriving. This may not be the popular vote with the Board, but you're not here to be popular. You're here to do what's in the best interest of the people who voted you into the positions that you currently hold. What is best for the residents of our neighborhood is for you to not rip out the heart and foundation of our community. Parents do not buy homes in neighborhoods to have to take their child to school 30 minutes away through a lot of uptown traffic. If you choose... If you close Beverly Hills to fill seats at Royal Oaks, you will get some seat fillers from the parents who have no other choice but to be at your mercy. The parents who can afford private schools are going to be looking into those options. There will be a few lucky kids who actually get into one of the other STEM seats by winning the STEM lottery. Our community will cease to thrive. The city of Concord will suffer from this loss. The value of homes will go down, real estate will not sell, and revenue will be spent where the citizens are spending their time. In this case, that is Canaplis. I hope that you are here tonight to listen to the people from the community been affected most by your decision. Take note of the people here and the ones unable to attend tonight's meeting but have shared with you their opinions through phone calls, emails, and all of the 'Save Our Schools' signs posted throughout Concord. It's not just a school, it's a whole community with a rich history and a bright future. Let us continue to shine. As elected officials, it's your duty to serve and represent your citizens. And I hope that when it comes time for you to cast your vote, you will make the right choice and keep Beverly Hills open. Thank you."
Carlos Paredes?
Sespades.
Okay.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Carlos Sespades. I'm a ninth grader at the Early College of Technology, and I have attended Wyancoff Elementary, Beverly Hills, and Concord Middle. That being said, I have experienced both big school settings and small school settings. I believe that a small school setting is a better learning environment for students because it helps teachers focus on their students and build a stronger relationship with them. Through my experience, I have found it harder to build a relationship with teachers in a bigger school setting rather than a smaller one. At Beverly Hills, I felt as if my safety was a priority. Now, I'm not saying that it was not at Concord or Wyancoff, but I did feel like more of a priority at Beverly Hills. In my time at Concord, I was assaulted multiple times by other students. At Concord, I felt like the administrators just titled the incident as the norm and would make me feel as if they did not really care. At Beverly Hills, there was an incident, and the administration handled the situation in a timely manner, and I felt like a priority. And just like every child, I had many struggles, and during my struggling points that I would experience, I would be treated well by my Beverly Hills family. The last point I would like to make is about Beverly Hills becoming a STEM school. Now, one of my main questions about this is, why would you promote this school as a STEM school, and then after drawing many people to Beverly Hills, to the Beverly Hills family, decide to close the school? By taking away Beverly Hills, you are taking away the family feeling from this amazing school and community. I hope that you can understand how much this school means to not just me, but the entire Beverly Hills community. So I ask that you please vote against closing Beverly Hills. Thank you."
And this is Maylin Sespedes?
Sespades.
Sespades.
It's okay. "Good evening, Board members. My name is Maylin Sespades, and I live in the Beverly Hills neighborhood. My husband and I moved here with our two kids from Miami, Florida, looking to give them a better life in a smaller town, as we saw when visiting back in 2008. After living in Wyancoff District, we had the opportunity to purchase our home in the Beverly Hills neighborhood, after finding and falling in love with the neighborhood and everything that it had to offer. My son was in Wyancoff and then transitioned to Beverly Hills. My daughter has only experienced school at Beverly Hills. My son's transition to a bigger setting for middle school was not an easy one, mainly due to the amount of kids with behavior problems that he was exposed to and the administration that seemed to be overwhelmed. I think that smaller settings are well worth the investment for our children to be able to have the attention and support that they need to have a good education and be safe. When we first found out that the possibility of Beverly Hills closing, I was in disbelief because I could not believe that such a historic and important part of our neighborhood and town would even be considered to be closed. I understand that money is a big motivator, but have all options been explored before resolving to close down? One of the main things that make our neighborhood so great, has the neighborhood... I'm sorry, has the Board taken into consideration what this would do to our children, our town, our neighborhood, our culture here? As I said before, we came from Miami, Florida, and what we loved about Concord was a small-town feel. I understand that Concord is growing and things will change, but isn't it important to preserve a school that has done so much for so many? Can you please allow us the opportunity to give our children the same opportunity that families came to Concord looking to provide our children with, which is to grow up in a small neighborhood with a neighborhood school? In the seven years we have lived in our home, we have seen multiple families move in after us with smaller children than ours. I'm sure that what drew them to the neighborhood was the same thing that enticed us, which is knowing that their children would attend Beverly Hills. Lastly, I want to also state what has already previously been mentioned, but that I want to reiterate and is of great concern, which is our property value. I know that my decision to purchase our home might not have been the same if my children would have to go across to another town to attend school. Our home is our greatest investment, and this decision will have a great impact for many years to come on the values of our homes. This is an issue that other areas would not have to face, but we would. Please save our school, save our neighborhood. Don't take away our neighborhood history. Don't take away what makes us so special. Thank you very much."
The next speaker already spoke for her daughter, and I'm concerned about the public hearing process. If people can bring in a letter to speak for someone else...
In the earlier public hearing, my daughter works two evening hours and is a credit student. So in the earlier public hearing, my elder daughter spoke for Claudine.
But she didn't speak for herself, too, did she? I'm just concerned about if we set a precedent if one person speaks for two people.
Would you like me to read her letter?
No, I'm asking our attorney for advice here, please.
I would say let her speak this time, and sit down and address the procedure.
Okay.
As to how to handle that.
Okay. I just don't worry about setting a precedent and we could go on for three days with people speaking for each other.
I'm sorry, I asked someone else to read Claudine's letter.
Okay. No, that's fine. Come on. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Well, I'm still brunch-a-conga shelf, huh? And we began this journey eight weeks ago, but there still remains one burning question: Why? Why would you destroy a beautiful and successfully functioning school which has existed for generations? Why not appreciate the benefits of a school that has served students so long and so well? Why is there a concentrated effort to fill Royal Oak seats when the wisdom of leaving open space for future growth will only result in your being praised in the near term for your foresight? Why has there not been continued maintenance on the downtown Concord schools since this seems to be a large part of the motivation used to push for closure? Why is there not better containment of construction costs? A 30-foot entry might make small children wonder if they are going to be beamed up to the starship Enterprise. And did no one realize that windows placed in hallways, attractive though they might be, completely negates the one space where children are usually sequestered in time of threat from a hurricane, or tornado, or worse? Why add to the three schools that already must straddle I-85 with the additional traffic, congestion, and safety issues that will result? Why not recognize that the continued growth in our county is well away from the dense downtown core of Concord, and school plans for the many new neighborhoods should focus in those areas of growth? At Exit 60 alone, there will shortly be a 424-family residential development, and we seem to be losing farmland at an alarming rate. We are but a small spark plug of 420 and a large engine of 32,000 students. That is merely 1 and 1/4 percent, but we do count, and most importantly, the children and the families who rely on us count as well. It is especially for these families that we plead for your support. The socioeconomic variety that Beverly Hills enjoys is vast, and it has enriched our children beyond measure. The friendships that develop and the understanding, acceptance, and rapport that result is vital to the culture in which we now live. We no longer have a Norman Rockwell society, and too many families face daunting odds to provide what they can for their children. Closure of Beverly Hills will cause significant loss of community and parental involvement. You cannot imagine that parents who have to work two jobs, who might not have a car or other transportation, and who may have neither the time nor the energy to travel excessive distances to continue to participate in teacher conferences, school programs, or volunteer activities as they do now. Beverly Hills may not be new and shiny in your eyes, but it is a precious jewel to us. It has a loving, caring, supportive environment that provides children with comfort and security and increases their ability to learn and thrive. Our fight to save Beverly Hills is not an insular fight. Thousands of people outside of the Beverly Hills community have expressed their dismay and outrage at this agenda. Please support the people's wishes and maintain the integrity of our community schools. Thank you."
Thank you. Mornita Davis?
No, I haven't. She's not here. Lane Stallings?
Okay, so Mornita is not speaking?
Number 35?
Yeah, so you're listed as number 36.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was sent here.
Okay, so we're only going to have one speaker. Yeah, okay.
Okay. I was asked to speak tonight and tell two stories, and it's probably because I'm old as dirt that I know these stories. But first of all, my name is Lane Stallings, and I grew up in Beverly Hills. My father lived there until his death in 2004. They built on Grandview Drive one house up perpendicular to the playground at Beverly Hills, and their property backed up to that of Willard Jenkins, who originally owned all the land across from the school on both sides of what is now Warren Street. My grandfather was James Arthur Warren, and his next-door neighbor, Sam Osborne, S.O. Stone, owned most of the land on the block on Church Street between Palisade and Earl Street, and then down the hill into the woods for a long way on Palisade. I remember their making this land available to the school system and, in fact, giving a part of it outright if it were to be made into a neighborhood school, to be used for a neighborhood school. I contacted Willard Jenkins' son, who's an attorney in Durham, his name is Richard Jenkins, to corroborate my memories and learn more about the history of the neighborhood, and his, Mr. Jenkins, the attorney's mother, was the sister of S.O. Stone, who joined with my grandfather to give the land. He concurred that this transaction was woven into the Stone family history. I also found others in Concord who remember this and who are willing to add their voices to ours. The name of Palisade Drive was subsequently changed to Stonewood in Mr. Stone's honor, and the street across, perpendicular to the school, was changed to Warren Street in honor of my grandfather. The original, now it's back to Palisade, I don't know when that changed, but Warren Street's still there, but the original address of Beverly Hills School was Stonewood. I looked it up. Finally, a more personal story. I was in the very first, third grade class at Beverly Hills and continued there through the sixth. My sister was there for all sixth grades. When I was in the summer after my fifth-grade year, my parents moved to downtown Concord into an apartment while they built their house on Grandview. My mother also became very ill, and my world was turned upside down. I don't know what I would have done without my Beverly Hills School family. I walked four blocks to the bus station, rode the bus to Church Street, got down on Palisade and Church Street, walked the remaining distance to Beverly Hills School, rain or shine. That's how much Beverly Hills School meant to me. It still enriches my life, and I've taught for 35 years many of those students that came from Beverly Hills School. There's nothing like it. So thank you for your time and for letting all of us speak.
Lauren Robbins? Are you Lauren?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Robbins, and I'm a teacher at Royal Oaks Elementary. First, I want to thank the Planning Committee for all of their time and hard work, as they have come together to create scenarios that make the most sense to fill the new Royal Oaks. I also want to thank the Board and Dr. Louder for giving Royal Oaks an amazing opportunity by making us an arts magnet program. I am incredibly excited to see the positive impact this arts program will have on our precious students. When we first learned of our journey as a school of the arts and the process to getting there, as well as the transition that would be required while we waited for our new building, we were incredibly nervous but excited about what was to come once we were able to return home. Our time at Bogart has been great, and we are eternally grateful to their staff and students for welcoming us into their family for these two years. As we move through this year, our students have become increasingly excited about returning home and being in our brand-new building. They are sad to be leaving their new friends at Bogart, but they can't wait to really get to experience the new arts program. I also know our parents are ready for their students to be closer to home. With that being said, we were shocked and incredibly disheartened to hear that many of our students might not be able to return to the school they were promised based on the recommendation of Scenario E. Scenario E will take almost 100 of our students and move them to two other schools. Forty-one of those students are currently with us at Bogart. Forty-one students who had to leave their home transitioned to a new and much larger school, far away from home and requiring at least a 30-minute bus ride. Forty-one students who were told that it will be okay because they will be returning to a brand-new, state-of-the-art school with an amazing arts program. Now, these same 41 students are being told that they may have to go to yet another school where they will once again have to start all over, but this time, they will have to do it without familiar friends and teachers. This will be the third school in four years that some of these students will be forced to attend. The parents of these children are hearing that it is okay, you can sign your child up to go to Royal Oaks, but you will now have to provide transportation, a task that is not possible for many of these families. While Scenario E makes the map look clean, our students are not lines on a map. They are precious children from diverse backgrounds, which make up our amazing student body of Royal Oaks rockets. These are students who are excited to learn, thanks to our amazing teachers who have jumped headfirst into our new arts program. They are students who are gaining confidence, growing as scholars, and who are ready to feel at home again. Our students have faced many challenges over the years and deserve to be back home in the school they were promised. I am asking you, the Board, to not look at our students as lines on a map, but as wonderful and amazing children who just want to be in the school they were promised, with all of their friends and the staff that they have come to know and love and who they feel safe with. Thank you for your time.
And Jim Fulton?
Yes. Thank you very much. Good evening to members of the Board, and thanks for sticking around to hear us out. We all appreciate the time and attention that you're devoting to this issue. I live in the McAllister School District and support the efforts to keep Beverly Hills open, both because I believe their arguments have merit and because the same or similar arguments apply to opposition to whatever future attempt may be made to close McAllister and Coltrane Web. Most of the very good reasons for keeping Beverly Hills open have already been presented, so I would like to address two of the arguments made by some in favor of closing the school. I apologize if I repeat some points that have already been made. Most of the demand for new school construction will occur where and when undeveloped areas of the county are incorporated into one of our cities and turned into residential subdivisions. Those communities are and have been developed at a cost to the taxpayer. That cost includes extending roads, utility services, fire, and police protection, including new fire stations, and providing ongoing maintenance for all this new infrastructure. And this is before you start talking about the cost of building schools and providing transportation to them. Residential subdivisions are not self-supporting. They are subsidized by taxes on businesses and commercial property and by taxes on residential property where the cost of development has been amortized. All of this is aside from the cost of managing additional traffic and improving existing routes to handle it, and the additional impact on both the environment and the quality of life in existing communities subjected to this burden. Some have tried to characterize opponents of closing Beverly Hills, and by extension, those opposed to closing, Coltrane Web and McAllister, as a small minority of county residents trying to retain their small, outmoded, inefficient, and expensive schools at substantial cost to the majority. I'm not here to argue against development, but leaving aside the fact that we do not believe the cost of keeping and renovating our schools is clearly more than building new, if we are going to talk about whose lifestyle choices are being subsidized by taxpayer money, then let's tell the whole story. My second point has to do with the question of the school district's obligation to the county as a whole. We are fortunate at Beverly Hills, Coltrane Web, and McAllister to have individual communities organized around our schools and our communities organized around a downtown center. This is the way people have historically built community and made place for themselves. The county school district is an arbitrary construct put in place primarily to consolidate services and to save money. To dismiss the importance of our schools to our community by saying there are 30,000 residents the district must be accountable to in making this decision is the worst kind of bureaucratic flatlining that shows no respect for any true form of community building and organization. We should strive to build more schools such as these, not work so hard to tear down the ones we have. I'd also like to say I'm sorry by recommending Scenario E, that the superintendent has left you stranded in the ditch to wrestle with all of this. As was mentioned in earlier meetings and alluded to earlier in this session, he appears not to have followed the N.C. general statutes and board policy either because he didn't know them or simply chose not to. You have the opportunity to make this right by using Royal Oaks as a swing school for students from Beverly Hills, McAllister, Coltrane Web, and renovating our existing schools and returning our students to them. Thank you very much.
Mr. Shaw?
Stephanie Moore is not here tonight. I want to read her statement.
Okay. Can you give me your name again?
Raquel. And I'm just gonna read the email verbatim. "I live in the Royal Oaks District, and my child attends Beverly Hills. I have attended almost all of the feedback meetings on the subject of redistricting Royal Oaks. I support keeping Royal Oaks students, all of them at Royal Oaks. I also support keeping Beverly Hills students at Beverly Hills. The Board of Education has held these feedback sessions to garner information from the community. We were presented with a recommendation for Scenario E. The Board of Education has overwhelmingly not taken the feedback from these sessions into consideration. The feedback is overwhelmingly for keeping Royal Oaks students at Royal Oaks and Beverly Hills students at Beverly Hills. Proper procedures have not been followed by the Board of Education in regards to how this entire situation has been handled. I, for one, feel like my time and tax dollars are valuable. When I take time to go to vote for local officials, it is with the understanding that who I'm voting for will follow proper procedures and listen to the voices of the community that supports them. I have taken time to vote, and I have taken time to attend these meetings, all scheduled for 6:00 p.m., which is no easy matter for a majority of working families. The decisions in regards to this matter affect more than simple school lines. They delve deeper into the fabrics of our communities, families, children, local businesses, the fabric of an entire area of Concord. Excuse me. What works in newly-developed, large swathes of former farmland in our county is not a cookie-cutter solution for every area of the county. The downtown area of which Beverly Hills is a part of requires a more creative solution, a solution that Charlotte Mecklenburg has already learned. To preserve and give cause to thrive to a downtown community, neighborhood schools are essential. This is bigger than the Board of Education. This is bigger than redistricting Royal Oaks. This strikes the heart of the future of downtown Concord and at the heart of Cabarrus County schools. There was a time when great faith was had in the Board of Education to listen to the community and to do the right thing by our students, and as of today, that faith no longer finds purchase in our county. I truly hope that each of you will do your own research and not rely solely on what data you have been given, which we collectively are interpreting as largely more opinion than fact. Thank you."
Okay. Amanda Ross?
Yes. My name is Amanda Ross, and I am the parent of a first grader at Beverly Hills and a rising kindergartner. I am against the closing of this small neighborhood school. There are many benefits to a small school: more individualized attention, the ability to interact further with teachers; teachers have more flexibility to use different approaches and enrichment activities that yield student growth and higher test scores, ultimately resulting in fewer discipline problems. I'm here to be the voice for my daughter and any other child who may need a small school environment. My daughter has selective mutism. You may not be familiar with selective mutism. I had never heard of it until two years ago, when it was first mentioned to us, but after countless doctor appointments and therapy sessions, we finally received a diagnosis, and this describes my daughter perfectly. Selective mutism is an anxiety disorder describing a child's inability to speak in select social settings. They speak and interact with family members and a few close friends, but become mute or only whisper in public settings. We knew starting school would
Amanda Ross?
Yes. My name is Amanda Ross and I am the parent of a first grader at Beverly Hills and a rising kindergartner. I am against the closing of this small neighborhood school. There are many benefits to a small school: more individualized attention, the ability to interact further with teachers; teachers have more flexibility to use different approaches and enrichment activities that yield student growth and higher test scores, ultimately resulting in fewer discipline problems. I'm here to be the voice for my daughter and any other child who may need a small school environment. My daughter has selective mutism. You may not be familiar with selective mutism. I had never heard of it until two years ago, when it was first mentioned to us, but after countless doctor appointments and therapy sessions, we finally received a diagnosis, and this describes my daughter perfectly. Selective mutism is an anxiety disorder describing a child's inability to speak in select social settings. They speak and interact with family members and a few close friends but become mute or only whisper in public settings. We knew starting school would be a challenge for her. Our home school is urban, and when we toured there, I could tell she was completely overwhelmed. As we walked out the door, she said that school was too big. Luckily, we were able to enroll Ella at Beverly Hills for the STEM program, and when we toured that, I could tell she was more comfortable. She even had a smile on her face when we left. I knew that Beverly Hills was a step in the right direction for her progress and that being in a small school was best for her needs. Since being at Beverly Hills, I have seen so much improvement with her anxiety level. Don't get me wrong, some days are still very challenging, and we have to talk about the routine of her day to calm her and ease the anxiety. If it weren't for the staff at Beverly Hills, I don't believe Ella would be thriving the way she is. They have made accommodations to help her succeed. She only talks to a few teachers, which can be challenging, but the staff are creative and make it possible for her to communicate. I don't worry when dropping her off in the morning. I feel certain that the staff know Ella and know how to help her when she may not be able to express a need. My child is known by name at Beverly Hills. She does not become just another student in the mix of 900-plus that she would be in the larger schools. She receives the attention that she needs, and that won't happen at a larger school. I know the day-to-day life for her is different than most children, and keeping a constant routine helps tremendously. I can't even imagine what goes through her mind or being so anxious that you are afraid to be away from your safe place. Children with anxiety have an extremely hard time dealing with change, and closing Beverly Hills would be detrimental in her progress. I believe it would cause her to regress and lessen in her communication abilities. Ella knows the situation we are facing with Beverly Hills from hearing talk at school. I asked her if there was anything she would like for me to say tonight, and she said that she loves her school and doesn't want it to be taken away. I hope you remember my daughter's situation and all the children at Beverly Hills when you make your decision. Thank you."
Mr. and Mrs. Ward is not here to speak. Forty and forty-one, Speaker forty-two. I'm sorry. Speaker forty-three?
Speaker forty-three is Karen Hanslick.
I'm Karen Hanslick. Not really. I'm Michael Hanslick. I'm Michael Hanslick, speaking on behalf of my wife, Karen Hanslick. I am a former student of Beverly Hills Elementary. Scott Paget was my principal. I am happy to see that he still remembers being my principal. I cherish my memories from that time, and life was a lot simpler back then. My remarks will be brief. I understand this is a difficult and challenging process for everyone involved. I understand that your job is to make hard choices with limited resources. I know that this process was caused by decisions made by county commissioners, but especially by the state legislature. That being said, you and I are all here voluntarily, and you ran for and won this position, although I don't, I wonder if you knew what you were getting yourself into when you did that. The most important thing I want to say is a warning. We have become a society of numbers crunchers and spreadsheets. They dictate our jobs, our government, and our schools. It seems that all solutions can be found staring at a computer screen and moving numbers in Excel. That is something that was once considered a solution, but now the flaws of that shortcut are becoming clear. Pillotex, they use spreadsheets. Philip Morris used spreadsheets. Wachovia used them. They took actions based on what they thought they saw. All of them thought that they had no choice because the spreadsheets told them what they had to do. It didn't end well. Don't fall into a trap of thinking that the lives of children, parents, teachers, and citizens can be solved by shuffling the numbers in a spreadsheet. They become numb and deaf to those who disagreed with the numbers. The real solutions came from meetings like tonight, where there's an opportunity to partner with the stakeholders, to engage the choices, have face-to-face discussions and negotiate solutions. I beg you to think beyond the spreadsheets. Listen to your conscience. We all know this is a subpar solution. Table this discussion, do some more homework, sit down with representatives of the neighborhoods to consider their options. I'd be willing to act as a representative myself. Thank you very much.
Now, we know who this speaker is.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Ramser.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim Ramser. I want you to know that I was there the day that Beverly Hills was opened in the third grade. My teacher was Ms. Sarah Howard. Her daughter was here. Maybe she's gone, but she was here. Our principal was Joe Fries. Dr. Fries' daughter and grandchildren are here today. A few years after I was in the third grade, I had two children, a lot of years afterwards, and they went to Beverly Hills, my son and my daughter. A few more years went by, and my grandson became the third-generation Beverly Hills kid in our family. So I'm very proud of that. But I've been where y'all are tonight. I've had a lot of tough decisions to make over 20 years on city council. I tried to evaluate each of those proposals, thousands of proposals, thousands of dollars impacting thousands of people over the years. So I tried to do the best I could to analyze what was going on. I asked a lot of questions. Some people say too many questions, but at times I would try to tweak things to make sure that the deal we were being presented, a sweet deal that day, didn't turn into be a sour deal in the future. With all that said, with all due respect, I just cannot see the logic in closing a perfectly good school like Beverly Hills and busing people or transporting people to another city to be educated. So I hope that you will do the right thing and try every effort to keep Beverly Hills open. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Annie Pickett.
Good evening.
Good evening.
When you get these people up here who are older than dirt, we tend to want to tell you a story. And some of you may not know me, but I taught six years and then I worked for Cabarrus County Schools 19 years and Kannapolis City 17 years. And I worked for both systems as Director of Personnel and Administrative Services. Lots of stuff comes under that Administrative Services, including redistricting. So I know how difficult that is, how heartbreaking it is. I even wound up redistricting my own daughter and neighborhood. She's still mad. the vibrancy of the city of Concord and what these beloved city schools, former city schools mean to that. But I also want to take you back a few years, back to 1983, when the Concord City Schools and Cabarrus County Schools merged. I was there, as were a few other people who are here. The Concord City people came into the merger, putting all of their trust and faith into the Cabarrus County Board of Education, Administration, and others, trusting that people would come together and honor the Concord traditions and agreements that were made with that merger. The Cabarrus Board and administrators were so empathetic to the situation they were in, they didn't want to close their city schools system and worked hard to be welcoming and respective, respectful. This merger was seen as one of the most successful in North Carolina. If the people of Concord had had any idea that that merger could lead to the closing of one of their beloved schools, I don't know that it could have happened. Even more than 30 years forward, the community's support for their elementary schools has only grown stronger. I worked directly with Joe Fries from 1974 until his retirement in 1988. He had passion for the theme, as you've heard. The schools belong to the people and must be what the people want the schools to be. I can still hear that echoing through the years. In that vein, how can a school be successful when one-third of the students, parents, and other supporters don't want to be there? There has to be a solution that keeps these cherished neighborhood schools open. Thank you.
Linda Dumkin?
Yes. I'm here because Scenario A is still listed as one of the options for Royal Oaks redistricting. I am the Boger parent representative on the Royal Oaks redistricting committee. On November 15th, at our redistricting meeting, we ranked Scenario A the least acceptable of these scenarios, even below Scenario F, the do-nothing scenario. You already know all the big reasons the committee gave for A being ranked so low. Scenario A boundaries are not logical. About 200 kids are taken out of Boger to go to Wyancoff, and then 200 kids from Wyancoff go to Royal Oaks. Boger will become a small school with Scenario A and will have to share resources. Choosing Scenario A doesn't help with the 10-year plan and doesn't help save money. The railroad tracks between Wyancoff Kids and Royal Oaks School is a problem, and Boger has plenty of space for growth without Scenario A. I also agree with Scenario A not being chosen on an emotional level. I have been at Boger, I have been a Boger parent for the last nine years. Out of these nine years I have been at Boger, seven of these years we have graciously hosted two waves of Odell students and one wave of Royal Oaks students and Royal Oaks teachers. My third grader at Boger has had to say goodbye to about 250 Odell students at the end of his first-grade year, kids he has been with since the start of kindergarten. Then his second-grade year, about 220 kids from Royal Oaks came to Boger. At the end of this third-grade year, he will be saying goodbye to those same Royal Oaks students. And if Scenario A is chosen, he will have to say goodbye to about 400 Boger students and the only elementary school he has ever known. And because Boger is not a program-choice school, he and the other 200 Boger students can't choose to go back to Boger. Boger has already gone through a lot of change by opening up our school to other schools. Our children have made and lost many friends. While we have enjoyed our visitors, it is now time for Boger to be left to grow and become Boger again. Please don't separate our school. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Joni Lebel, and I am a neighbor of Beverly Hills. I've been a, been their neighbor for 30 years, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. However, I'm not speaking for myself. What I, what I wanted to do was share some highlights of, with permission, a letter that was written to the Cabarrus County Board of Education and also the newspaper and city council by Bob Carruth, who is a neighbor and is a former member of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners from 2000 to 2012, and also a parent and a grandparent of Beverly Hills child. You all got a copy of the letter. I'm gonna skip through some of it where he just talks about his relationship and the decisions that he had to make being on the board. But I'm gonna go on down to, says, "There has to be a better solution than to just close Beverly Hills Elementary School. Yes, your staff has made great efforts in studying the future of our community's anchor school, and the recommended solution likely included those factors which make for a highly efficient suburban school system that the Cabarrus County School has become. From that perspective, and that perspective alone, you have given what is probably the best recommendation. But you missed something else. Each of our school communities are unique. Cabarrus County is a melting pot of suburbanites, downtown dwellers, and rural farmers and tradesmen. We have rural schools, we have shiny new suburban schools, and yes, we even have traditional walkable downtown neighborhood schools. That's why we always sought to replace, not just close or consolidate our county schools like Odell, AT Allen, Mount Pleasant, Bethel, Wyancoff, Harrisburg, and yes, even Royal Oaks. Many of these fine people, yes, that, those that chose you in the last election, also made another choice, to intentionally locate in a community where their children could attend a walkable neighborhood school. This in and of itself, a magnet, just as a parent would choose to send their child to a STEM or fine arts campus. And with your decision to support the staff recommendations, you would destroy that choice. There is a way out, but to do so means you'll have to move outside of the blinders put on by your focus only on the needs of the Cabarrus County School system and look at the impact of your decision, not only on Beverly Hills, but for the other traditional neighborhood schools as well. You must look holistically at what effect shuttering these neighborhood schools could have on the long-term economic and intangible effect of the downtown Concord neighborhoods they serve. I've heard several ideas proposed that should be considered, but these proposals will be wasted if you proceed with the recommended course of action with your vote on December 11th. I urge you to take a pause if need be, convene a task force that's not just focused on the system, but one that's made of stakeholders, parents, and community leaders from the neighborhood school communities to come up with a long-term solution for our neighborhood schools in downtown Concord. I hope when you vote on December 11th, you will pause to consider the countless hours, the meetings, the signs, and the overwhelming support to keep Beverly Hills open that's been on full display in the last few weeks and months. Our democratic system will work if we give the people a chance to be involved. Harness this energy and activism that has blossomed. Give them the opportunity, let them come up with a proposal, and see whatever, and see that everyone comes out a winner. And thank you for your service.
Okay, Laura, and how do you say your last name?
Guerrero.
Guerrero.
So hello. This evening, I do not, don't have much to add. I've actually like crossed out half of what I was planning to say because it's very redundant and you've heard much of it several times tonight. But I'm just going to add a few things, like highlight a few of the points, you know, apply them to my life. You know how this goes. So my youngest, Luke, is a fifth grader at Beverly Hills, and every Monday, my husband Greg is able to go have lunch with him because his medical practice is close by. This is treasured time, both by him and my son. I've heard people mention the small school factor. Well, I am personally a student who needed my professors to know my name. I'm one of those weird ones who wanted my professors to know me. I wanted to feel, like, that just made me feel comfortable, that made, that was something I needed to have in order to learn and do well. I didn't want to feel like a number. So I hope you will recognize that there are people like us out there when you're considering your options. Bigger is not always better. After hearing all of the numbers and stats and countless reasons for keeping Beverly Hills open, at the heart of it all for me is a very simple concept. It is normal to expect your child to attend school in your community. That is not a crazy or ridiculous idea or expectation. It is considered normal all over the United States, no matter where you move. It's expected that your kids get to go to school in your community. I am now more concerned about our community after hearing Mayor Paget bring attention to the Logan and Long School, school closings, and I know how those communities are, since I've moved here 20 years ago, understanding now that that was because their schools had closures in the 70s. So this is more than just a school closure situation. This can have repercussions for our entire, oh, sorry, for our entire county. I'm not Italian. Beverly Hills was part of the city of Concord's school system before the merger. It has always been a Concord community school. So I'm asking you to please vote to keep our kids in our community. Please do not close Beverly Hills. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Okay, so is our young lady going to speak first? And your name is Kendrick?
Kennedy.
Candy?
Kennedy.
Oh, Kennedy, okay. I see that now. These last couple names have, were written quickly, weren't typed like the earlier names. Okay, you may go ahead and start.
Hi, my name is Kennedy Pittman, and I'm a third-grade student at Royal, oh, Royal Oaks. When my teacher gave me the paper about that there may be a redistrict, I was really disappointed and sad, and I don't really want to lose my friends at Boger. And I, I do want to go to Royal Oaks and I hope a lot of my friends at Boger, that our Royal Oaks students go there. And hopefully I get to attend some of the stuff that at Boger, at my school, they're doing now. Like, one of the things I attend is, it's a play called The Aristocats, and I do this basketball activity. It's where you learn how to be respectful, responsible, and safe, and it's really, really fun, and I enjoy it, and I'm just hoping I can attend Royal, Royal Oaks, and I'm just hoping you guys can't take, take- hoping you guys can't take, take Royal Oaks away from us. Thank you.
And are you mom?
Yes, mom.
Okay, could you give us just the, not the number, but the street you live on?
Hallfield Street.
What's?
Hallfield Street.
Hallfield?
Hallfield. H-A-W-F-I-E-O-D.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rolanda, Kennedy's mom.
Okay.
Kennedy, she's one of the 28 students that may be moved to Mount Pleasant Elementary, which is an extra additional five miles away from our home. I'm disappointed to hear that Kennedy and other children who are in Scenario E may be moved from their new school and the arts program at Royal Oaks, which was promised to them. Kennedy and I was very excited about the new opportunities that was offered, and now may be taken away. This year, because our school has implemented the new arts program, I can tell a huge difference in the way Kennedy learned. She's more excited about school, and when I ask her how her day was, she's eager to talk about it. She goes into detail about everything she's experienced that day. Last year, when I asked her how day was every day, it was just okay, which was little to discuss. Kennedy, she's a dancer at heart, she's incorporating dance and music at school, she's more passionate about learning, and she's also a part of the Royal Rocks, the Royal Rockets basketball team, and Artistic Cats Play, and she has found a new love of acting. The promises you made last year is producing successful and, successful students and homes. Please do not take this opportunity away from us. Thank you.
And Adam Trautman?
Best for last, huh?
Best for last.
So what's, what do you say? I mean, there's been so much, so many people with so many different views and ideas, and say, how do, how do you follow all this? So, anyway, good evening. I'm, I'm here, again, on behalf of the folks who were moved to Mount Pleasant, who wish to stay, just like every other parent, teacher, faculty member in this room, fighting for their small school experience. We're part of the Mount Pleasant folks that never went to Royal Oaks. We were never part of the faculty, we were never part of the student body, we were never part of those folks, because 99% of them moved to Bogart. We happen to be on the Mount Pleasant side of the county, and it just made the most logical sense just to move us over there, hence the board's original decision to keep us there. That's where our kids have been for the past two years, and that's where they found a home. Like Beverly Hills, Mount Pleasant is a small school where faculty and family, where faculty are like family. Teachers know students and parents on a first-name basis, which ultimately, I think that's, you know, that's what everybody in this room wants. Granted, I understand there's some opposition from folks that were moved to Mount Pleasant, but that's not everyone. We currently live on Gregory Road. I'm sure each and every one of y'all have seen maps, petitions, and stuff from my wife and I. We're less than half a mile from the current Mount Pleasant boundary. We have 100% acceptance to leave us at Mount Pleasant. Obviously, in a redistricting thing like this, you're going to have a lot of oppositions on every side of the fence, and it's impossible to make everybody happy. But I would please like for you to know, we are a small group of people, and probably smaller than everyone else, but we do have a voice. And just like everyone else, whenever y'all do decide to vote, please, please remember us when you make your decision. Thank you.
Mr. Basilese, that concludes our registered speakers. Okay. Thank you all for participating, and for those who have stuck with us for almost three hours now. We're going to proceed, we'll close the public hearing here in a moment, we'll proceed with the rest of our meeting, and there will not be a vote on redistricting tonight. Obviously, you raised even more questions, and I think it's fair to say, board members, that we've all asked a high volume of questions proposing, I'll say, the rest of the alphabet on scenarios, on what about this and what about that. So we are taking your comments seriously, and we're trying to continue to gather information. So, board members, at this time, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing on the Royal Oaks boundaries.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Harrison, a second.
Second.
By Mr. Schumaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 6-0. And we will move on to, uh, let's see. I say we'll give you all a moment to leave, if you'd like. Okay, next we'll have the agenda item for budget amendments. Ms. Clutch, you want to come up in? Oh, you have to set up the other laptop?
Yeah.
Okay.
Switching the computers out.
What's that?
Switching the computers out. No, I'm not.
Okay, agenda item 5.01 is regarding the budget amendments. That's the, that's the summary agenda, not the detailed agenda. Michael? Here we go. Okay, we're all ready.
Now we're ready. Good evening, I have three budget amendments for you tonight. We'll start with the state fund. As you can see at the top of the document, that's our adjustment for charter schools. May come surprising to you to have reduced $467,000 of our funds, considering we have less overall charter school students that we're sending than we did prior year. So it was quite a shock to me, but as I looked into the allotment policy and dug into that, the adjustment is made for new and growing. So the charter school that declined was already outside of our budget. So we didn't, we basically didn't get credit for the decline, because that was set aside in a different budget. So it's only new and growing, and so the, that attributed to about 66 students that were growing in the charter schools, and primarily, primarily those come from Bradford, Corvian, and Kannapolis Charter, the, the impactors this year for that. So that equated about $467,000 of reduction. The other three are just minor, either adjustments to the actual versus planning allotment, our normal substitute reimbursement, and then an allocation for the M-class iPads, and that, we've gotten that for at least three years now.
So the first items on here are essentially pass-throughs. Maybe that's not a fair phrase to use.
No, they're not pass-throughs. So when the state projected our ADM, they projected students in, in our county, because those students then went to a charter school and didn't come here, they're taking that allocation and sending it to the charter school. Because those were projected in our number. The charter school students that I mentioned before, and the ones that are not growing or declining, were not in our number. So those don't impact our adjustment.
Is this, is this the same thing that you have done for the last five years?
It is the same, but it feels a little bit different. Because when you are in a position where you have less charter school students that you're sending, it feels like they should not be taking money away from you.
But as far as a budget adjust, amendment for this kind of thing?
It is.
Yep, thank you.
Are there any other questions on state? Okay.
Okay.
I'll go on to the next one, which is our federal budget amendment. Minor adjustments there, you'll see, to PRC 111, just an actual versus planning. Your next one is some funds specifically requested for IDA preschool. And then the final one is our, it's a new allotment, it's a PRC 108, and it's student support and academic achievement funds that are allocated to us.
Any questions, Paul?
We'll go to the final budget amendments, our local special fund, and these are our Jimmy Johnson grants for Odell Primary, Beverly Hills Elementary, and Jay Robinson High School. Are there any questions on those?
So we've accepted that grant?
I'm sorry?
We've accepted the grant?
We have.
Okay.
Well, I know it's been asked, what, what happened with the grant that we've accepted for Beverly Hills? If something's done with that.
So Ms. Steele has worked with the foundation, and they gave her the option to send the money with the kids if their kids were to be moved, to use it this year, within the year, for what they were purposed to buy or to send it back. So she, we had an option of three, three different options. And I can send the actual email from Ms. Steele to you, if you'd like, for me to send it to you. Are there any more questions?
Board members, any other questions? Consent agenda for next week? Consent? Okay, thank you. The next item is the revised administrative regulation for 302R.
This is administrative guideline. It's just a notice to the board that it has been changed, and to see if you have any questions. It is not a policy per se, it's just one of our administrative guidelines.
It looks like just clarifications, really.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions on this item? We don't need to vote on it? Just informational?
What's the background on it?
So this changes, came from the, the PLS update, and it's just to make it more in line with, with state statutes. Mr. Shaw, did you want to add anything to that?
So, uh...
Mic? Hit your mic, please. It's hidden.
Yeah, the school boards association PLS makes these changes. Sometimes they're pretty good, sometimes they're not that necessary, but if they're not bad, it's usually worthwhile to accept their changes, so we not get in a divergence from the PLS language and our own language. And so these are all useful changes, or at least nothing wrong. The most significant one, I believe, is on page five, that clarifies, that notice to parent about certain prohibited actions must be provided promptly, but also by the end of that workday, or no later than the end of the following workday. Gives more guidance to school officials as to when they must make that report.
Any other questions?
And that's consistent with what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, then item 5.03, policies for approval on first reading.
So we have quite a few tonight. Most of them are going to be related to one new change in the law, so I'll start with that one, or actually 11 of those, and I'm only going to read it for one, so I won't read it for all 11. Note one is Part One of the SL 2017-193, to be codified as General Statute 147, Article 6G, requires that the State Treasurer to create a list of companies that are determined to be engaged in BORCOT of Israel, and any company on that list is ineligible to go into a contract with a school system. And the note of Part Two of that same general statute amends the Iran Divestment Act that no longer requires clarification and a list update annually, it now is every 180 days. So the majority of those policies that you see, all are just changing that one, those two parts. I will speak specifically to those that are not. 8510, School Finance Officer, this revision includes strongly recommended changes, adds a new duty to report to the board and county commissioners when the finance officer receives a notice that the LEA is likely to be assessed for exceeding the pension spiking cap. You'll look at Policy 6430. This policy has been revised to consolidate information about state, federal, and local purchasing requirements. Advises the title of the policy to indicate that the policy addresses all person purchasing requirements, not just those required by the state law. Modifies the first paragraph to reference to federal requirements, and transfers the information from our Policy 6440, local person requirements for equipment materials and supplies to subsections B and C of the policy. If you look at Policy 6440 within this one, that is the policy that is being removed and then put into the policy I just went over, 6430. The remainder of those policies are part of General Statute 147, Article 6.
I don't see Policy 4720. I don't know if that's coming up, or we have mentioned it in a previous board meeting about a, is that on the docket some?
Yes, sir, it's on our December meeting. We'll be discussing it in December. Yes, ma'am. Will be on our agenda for the December policy meeting.
I had one comment on 6430 in Section C. You'll be changing the word board to...
Yes.
Replace with superintendent or designee?
Yes, that is correct.
Because I know, Ms. Burns, you said you couldn't get that into the...
Yeah, the, the change has been made in our, in our file, but we couldn't get it into board docs in time. I think it was pretty late in the afternoon. But it'll be, it'll be in there next week, when you, when you vote on it.
So that was the only change, to change that board reference to superintendent?
Yeah, yeah. Superintendent or designee.
Mr. Harrison, any policy questions? Mr. Schumaker, any other questions?
That was it.
Mr. Powell, any other policy questions? Board members, are we...
Consent?
Are we good for consent on this list of first reads? Okay, it sounds like it's... And 6440 is taken on place.
Yes, that'll be, that'll be a deleted policy, but you still have to vote on that.
To take that.
Yeah.
Okay, the next agenda item, 5.4, policies for approval on second reading.
These were on consent, so I think we have no questions at this point.
Any questions on the second reading?
Did we get any feedback?
No, sir. None.
What was the question?
Did we get any feedback to say?
Yeah, we're supposed to post these policies online, so we can get feedback from folks before we vote them.
They are posted.
And you didn't get any?
None. Okay, any other questions or comments on the second read policies? Okay, any other questions or comments on the second read policies? Consent agenda? Consent? Okay, and the last item under section five, the submission of training hours to NCSBA for the ethics training that four of us attended, myself, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Shoemaker, and Mr. Walter. I'll say that's fairly straightforward, two hours' credit for each of us is being requested. Any questions or comments?
Are these going to be framed for us or anything? Madam Chair?
We got to go.
I'll shut my mouth and just take the piece of paper.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda, board members?
Yes, ma'am.
You're ethical now, right?
Okay, very good. Section six, the first item there is regarding the consideration of names submitted for vacant board positions, position, say it's not multiple of us, to fill Mr. First's seat for the next year. And I just wanted to make a personal comment that I was absolutely impressed by the volume of talent who submitted their names, and not that I want to make us a 24-member or 25-member board, but sometimes I wish we could, we could select multiple from the interests, and I hope people will continue to have interest in the, in the schools. So, board members, I'd like to suggest that from the list of names, you all have the resumes to review, that perhaps by Tuesday evening, if you would submit, I'm going to say three names, open to suggestions, of your top preferences, I'll consolidate those, send it back to you by Wednesday night, and then you can further study those resumes additionally. Now, we are scheduled to vote and select the member at our meeting next week, so any thoughts on process? Okay, do we want to...
I'm fine with doing it next meeting.
Okay.
Get it over with.
And then potentially seat the new person in January for the work session? Would that be the intention?
Yes, Madam Chair, we had some discussions about also having some criteria that we would want to...
Oh, yes, thank you.
Generally, we'd want to apply to each of the...
Yes.
Limited number that we actually do...
With your shortlist, if you would also submit, and I will, I will share it back to the group then, your top two criteria for what you are looking for in a future colleague on our board. So, whether that be some community service component, some professional characteristics, whatever you're looking for. So, homework for you, I know it's a late night tonight, but some homework for you for tomorrow is to send me three names of your top choices, any of whom you feel you could support in the final vote, and two criteria for your selection, and then I'll consolidate that, and just really to give us some food for thought on what we're looking for in a replacement. So, is that agreeable? Everybody okay with that?
So, tomorrow night, we have to, you want us to provide you the two...
Three names.
Two criteria and three names.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think we can do some of that, but it wasn't really apples to apples on the submissions that we got. Some people were more lengthy and gave us more information than others.
Yeah, exactly.
It makes sense to have them, if there are as a finalist, to have them speak to us, or at least so we could ask questions.
Um, we can consider that.
So, the public can at least see what their intent is on serving here at the board.
If I understand the process correctly, Madam Chairman, Madam Chair, that everyone had the same opportunity to submit the same format and the same content to us for our consideration. Whether they did or not was their option.
Well, what I would suggest is, let's leave open whether we would want to have a very brief Q and A with the person in the board setting next week, or if you feel like when you develop your criteria, that you have enough information already, and say, yes, I can make a clear judgment on these up to three people that I'm preferring. So, my hope is that we will have a straw man and narrow it down to just maybe even two people by our commonality, so. So, or maybe it'll be clear, I don't, I don't know.
And we'll notify those people ahead of time, so they can be here at the meetings?
I would think so, I would like to do that as a courtesy to the people who rise to the top, so to speak, with your permission, do a courtesy email to those not rising to the top, and likewise notify the ones who are, so. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have any decision on that, other than a bit of a process to work through over the coming week, and so that moves us to our amended agenda item, oops, I'm sorry, 6.015, to go into closed session, and Mr. Shaw, would you read that?
Sure, the motion would be that the board... The motion would be that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a3, to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege. And it'd be appropriate, if someone wants to make that motion, they'd say so moved.
So moved.
Now, we're going to come back in here. Yes, then we'll return here for closed, open session. On the discussion of Royal Oaks Boundaries.
Madam Chair, who's taking the bat to go to the...
Carter. So, David made the motion.
Doesn't have to say.
Okay, I'll take a motion. All right, I'm sorry, we have a motion, second. I'll get used to it up here. All in favor of going into closed session, say aye.
Aye. So, we will, after, after the closed session, we'll come back in this room, and we'll talk about the final agenda item, is that the point?
Yes, we will come back in this room, and I've asked our building crews to remain for, to film that discussion.
Okay. We're on.
That's new.
Yeah, and I turn it off.
Ms. Burton-Ball, I will make a motion that we return into open session.
Should I move for a second?
Okay.
Oh, are we at the interview?
Yeah, we, we were waiting to come back on air.
Always waiting on key.
Okay, the board has returned from closed session, and will resume with agenda item 6.02, board discussion of Royal Oaks Boundaries.
Ms. Burton-Ball, I believe we need to have a motion to come back into open session, we haven't made that motion yet.
We left closed session, do we need a motion to come back into open again?
Uh, I thought we did. We always do it as...
It's a matter of practice.
Okay. Okay, so Ms. Shoemaker has made the motion, and Mr. Harrison has seconded the motion to come back into closed session.
Open.
Open session. And we'll now resume with 6.02.
Well, we need to do a vote, we did do a vote.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry, it's late, guys.
It's only midnight.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, we're in open.
Okay, so we're back in open session. So, board members, would you like to start with any comments, any questions of staff regarding the Royal Oaks redistricting?
Well, I'd just like to first thank everyone who came out. I know this is an arduous process, believe me, it's arduous for everyone involved, and these are hard decisions that we're having to make and even think about. But I want to thank them for all the research that they've done, for the time that they've spent, especially our staff. Our staff has been trying to answer questions, not only from the community, but also from the board members, as, as we wrestle with, with this Royal Oaks redistricting, and as Ms. Burton-Ball noted earlier, we probably have A through F on scenarios right now, when it looks at all the permutations that could come out of this. But that's my main comment, and then I, I would like to, yeah, I'll say, I'll stop there. Okay?
Okay, I know that we had, have received some information, and I know that it is going to be put all together into one report, but I know that some information was, and of course, I was telling everyone, we've got quite a bit of reading material to go over this week, but I would like staff to make sure when we, we, I know some figures were put together, but transportation was mentioned tonight, and I want to make sure when those figures are looked at, that we do get an accurate amount on transportation, because I, I want to make sure when we're looking at that, that the amount that we have for transportation does include what it's going to cost when they look at transporting those children from Beverly Hills over to Royal Oaks, because of all the detours and everything that's going to have to go, you know, with that, with everything that's going on with DOT and everything, and all that stuff is being taken into consideration, because I know that is a factor. And, and then I know that I've heard, okay, we're going to have such a savings, because there's two of everything. Well, you know, those children are still going to be there, and we're still going to have to have the same amount of teachers, so I want to make sure with whatever figures we're looking at are good figures. And so, if we're looking at numbers, that we are looking at the correct numbers, when we are given numbers. And I want, again, I want to thank staff, I know everybody worked, you know, very well with everything, but I want to thank all the individuals that were here tonight and spoke, and all the emails I tried to answer, as many as I could, but we've been inundated with so many, but I do thank all, everybody that's made the comment, and I have read them all, maybe getting, get them all answered, but I have read everything, and I will read all this information that we've got, because it is very important that we make the very best decision we possibly can. And I do thank everybody that has come out, and it is very important that we look at all the information we got, and I just want to thank everybody.
Mr. Harrison?
I'd like to state one time that I believe the staff has operated in good faith. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I had a couple of things, a couple of questions. Again, we can see by tonight, there's a huge support for this community and this school. What exactly does it cost, or will it cost us if we kept it open? Can we get that number? The other question again is, you know, we did talk about keeping kids together, and the scenario that's proposed doesn't quite do that, that's problematic to me. I'm still not real comfortable with the STEM, you know, these kids have been having STEM for the last two years, and splitting them up, I'm not comfortable with that at this point. I'd like to see, you know, better understanding on how we're taking care of these students. I had another question, some of the, the tenure plan on capacity on some of these schools is different than the capacity that was provided to us on some of these documents at some of the schools. See if we can kind of talk to you, or give me some information on why there's such a difference, on a couple of them, like Mount Pleasant, you've got almost a 75-student difference. You've got...
Mr. Walter, which Mount Pleasant school is that?
Mount Pleasant Elementary. We have a 10-year plan, so there's 722 students' capacity, and then our document that we're provided here, so the capacity is 650. Not sure why there's a difference. Irvin, same thing, we have 846, or 940, I'm not sure why those are different, and, I mean, it's only been a year's period of time.
Is that potential program versus physical capacity?
They both say program capacity.
So, what I would ask is if you have to send those to us, I'll have our staff look at our paperwork, look at our documents, they're all not done yet. And what I will say, I will make is they do, they do change, especially with program capacity, but if it's like design capacity, that will be different.
Well, it says program capacity in your 10-year, 10-year plan. It does change, so then that means it's a, it's a flexible number, it's not... So, the number at Royal Oaks, is it, is it hard at 650, or is it, what is the...
So, it'll be, design capacity is one thing, and program capacity is different.
Okay.
We're happy, I'll have our staff give you, when we, if you send us documents, we'll go over why it changed.
Okay. And again, you know, I've made some requests, I've not got some information I've asked for, as far as the GIS data, I've asked for that, I've not gotten that. I've asked for the Davis demographics information, we spoke here a couple of months ago, he said that was available, I've never seen that information as well, I'd like to see that, the electronic version of that. And then, again, the question that I had about we're building a school, you know, at the edge of our county, edge of our district, there's people across that school that can't, that can walk to that school, how many kids is that? And what, what, what would it take to allow them to walk to the school, walk to that school? Because again, there's, there's additional kids that could fill that potential school.
Your last request there, we have no data on that, that's not our school district.
Well, let's talk to the people in Kannapolis, and let's figure that out, so. Those are the ones I've got on the top, I will email you the rest.
Yeah, Rob, if you can, I guess, write out those questions, and just make sure you copy Carol and I, so we know for the rest of the board. Also, the information that Mr. Walter's referring to, I believe, is the raw data that is used in the GIS system, it does contain student family names, residences, and things, and this is kind of an unprecedented request, that a board member be given raw data that is, I'll say personally identifiable, information, so...
We could take out the personal identification data and still send the document, I've worked with GIS for quite some time.
Yeah, but I'll be honest, that's not a board member's duty to run data on their own.
I think it's actually his duty, and I think that, I'm glad somebody wants to get involved to that level of detail, and I don't see any reason why we can't give them the information. We give confidential information to board members all the time.
Yeah, I guess I would prefer that you make an appointment with staff and go down and ask for your request, but Ms. Carpenter just made a comment that perhaps we should vote on releasing it?
The attorney said, the attorney made the comment that the board needs to...
Attorney, my God.
That the board would need to decide if they wanted to do that, the attorney advised us of that, that the board would need to say that that's, you know, if the board decided they wanted to do that, that you could ask Barry, because we discussed that.
Okay, if you want me to make a good decision and see how we've come up with the data, I'd like to see the bottom numbers and see how that, that works, because again, the students are not distributed evenly in these colored districts, and I'd like to see that.
Okay, is that something, would you be happy to make an appointment with staff?
Be happy to make appointment with staff.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments this evening? One note I just wanted to make is that as we gather information, I've had some of my personal questions answered, we hear from speakers, it sometimes prompts new thoughts. I'd like to make sure the board is open to what I'll call a combination of plans. If, for example, we like most from one scenario, but we don't want, like, one little section, we heard from speakers from some of the other schools, that that, perhaps we look next week at voting on areas, on the maps, that we break it down to, and especially when we're looking at the Mount Pleasant area, some parts of what I'll call the Upper Boger section would like to stay at Mount Pleasant Elementary, people moving down across 85 and whatnot, and that northern section would like to stay at Royal Oaks, maybe not move anyone to Irvin, you know, whatever, just to look at the different areas as options, I believe we are going to hold one more public hearing, so I don't know if any of the, Mr. Shaw, you want to read a motion?
Sure. What time?
Can you hit your microphone, please?
My understanding is that the board might have that additional public hearing on the proposed closing of Beverly Hills Elementary School, perhaps next Monday at the board meeting. Would that, would you like that at the beginning of the board meeting, or at some specified time during the meeting?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we need to probably handle the rest of the agenda items, it should be fairly brief. It should be a fairly brief meeting next week, the agenda.
Except for recognitions and then what was it regarding that?
Well, we have two items. One is the Royal Oaks, and then the other one is the choosing of the temporarys, or dealing with the temporarys.
Tim's seat.
I don't know if it's going to be chosen or not, but.
So usually recognitions runs about 30 minutes?
Yeah, 30, probably now.
There a little more?
Yeah, because there's only two, right? We called back up?
There's the normal two, and then Public Resources has the teacher assistant.
Public and teacher assistant.
They have the reception before the board made amendments.
Okay.
That's not going to be extended, the reception's before the meeting, so it shouldn't be real long, but it is one extra thing.
So if we would post the meeting, the hearing at 7:00 PM? And then if we start as soon after, if it's 7:05 or 7:10, we're fine, right?
That's fine, yes.
Okay.
Do you still want to do guest speakers after that, too?
Guest speakers who are not the subject of the hearing for other topics?
We have the public hearing, and then after we've closed that public hearing out, then you'll go to the chair's comments, Dr. Leoner's comments, and then the guest speakers come back on. Do you want to?
I'm thinking we do everything but the Beverly Hills, Royal Oaks activities. Could we do everything else on our normal business agenda first?
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, that would be, the guest speakers would come before the Beverly Hills public hearing.
Yes, and the guest speakers, I would presume, hopefully people will, you know, I'll say kind of segment their comments, we're not having the same, that the guest speakers, we certainly can't stop anyone, but hopefully the guest speakers will be for issues that are not regarding redistricting.
Okay, but the purpose of the public hearing is what, again?
The purpose of the public hearing is regarding the potential closure of Beverly Hills.
I would have a motion. What, I can offer that, but do you have the time then? Do you want to do seven?
I would say post it for 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, okay. Well, as I understand it, the motion that could be offered would be a motion that the board schedule a public hearing from Monday, December 11, 2017, at 7:00 PM as part of the regular board meeting, to receive additional public comment regarding the proposed closing of Beverly Hills Elementary School pursuant to General Statute 115C-72A1.
Is there a second? Okay, so David, and Mr. Harrison made the motion, and Mr. Schumaker seconded the motion, all in favor of scheduling a public hearing regarding the closure, potential closure of Beverly Hills Elementary School, say aye? Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes, 6-0. Any other business for the board tonight? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So Mr. Schumaker made the motion to adjourn, and Ms. Carpenter seconded that motion. Thank you, and good night to everyone.